We will be starting our session. Apologies, we just wanted the maximum amount of audience to be here when we start. Hello, good morning, good evening to all. We have participants from all over the world joining us in this special session. I would like to welcome you all to this special session on reducing avoidable baby and women's death through improved rights and ecosystem for breastfeeding. This is our third session in this special webinar series on women's stories of survival, innovation, resilience and development. This session has been jointly organized by the Bringing Research for International Development and Global Equity Bridge Network, Auckland University of Technology and Avoidable Deaths Network. I am just a brief introduction about myself. I am Dr. Nimra Chodri. I am with ADN as a knowledge exchange public engagement coordinator. I am an MBBS doctor from the Dow University of Health Sciences in Pakistan and currently I am a master's in public health candidate at A U T, Auckland University of Technology, New Zealand. As with all the previous sessions, we have a few housekeeping rules. We would like to ensure that your microphones remain muted during the entire special session. If you have any questions or comments, please type it into the chat box. The special session is being recorded. If you do not wish to be seen, please turn off your cameras. Each section of this session will be timed. This session comprises two hours. See, this is the timetable for your information of how we will be running this event. So on behalf of ADN, I would again like to welcome you all and we hope that we have a very enjoyable and knowledgeable session. So now I would like Dr. Sari to introduce Bridge Network. And just a brief introduction about Dr. Sari. I would stop sharing my screen now. Dr. Sari Adhiani is the co-founder of the Bridge Network. She is dedicated to fostering connections and inspiring transformative change for a better world. She is an associate professor at the Department of Public Health, Auckland University of Technology, New Zealand. Over to you, Dr. Sari.
Thank you. Could you please share my slide, please?
Yeah, yeah.
I can see familiar names here. Thank you so much. Salamat soreh. Good afternoon for our colleagues in Indonesia. I will not take too long. I mean, we just want to introduce the Bridge Network and Bridge stands for Bringing Research for International Development and Global Equity. So it's about three years old. And basically, this is what we are doing. We want to connect around the globe. It's a creative and safe space. So we bring, you know, speakers like the three speakers today with their creative and innovation in looking into, you know, measuring mother's milk and how we can improve equity help for all. And we would like to enable conversation that raise awareness of global equity in equity issues and inspire action toward the common good. So without further ado, I would like to introduce our speakers. Is that the next one, Nimra? Should I introduce you now?
Just before the talks, we will have the poll, the pre-session poll. Lauren, would you start the poll? Yeah, thank you, Dr. Sari.
Lauren, are you there?
Yes, so we've got seventy-eight percent participation. If everyone could just, no, it's up to eighty-one, just a couple more people.
Oh, yes, I can see now. Sorry, sorry for being late.
Okay.
It's just the interview went a bit long.
Hello, Dr. Nibedita. So we have you next after the poll, all right?
Okay, I'm so sorry, everybody. It's a good number, ninety percent.
You want me to share your slides for you?
Yes, please. If the poll is done, then we can.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a neck and neck, isn't it? Yes, forty-one percent, a little forty-one percent. We shall see whether this number changes after the session. So I think, Lauren, it's not moving. I think eighty-six is a very good number, very good, healthy number. I think it's a good response. Do you want to close the poll? Would you like to continue?
Yes, the poll is closed. We can continue now.
Okay. Can share my slide.
All right, so we have Dr. Nibedita here. Dr. Nibedita is an associate professor in risk management based at the University of Leicester School of Business. She is a social scientist specializing in disaster risk reduction and she is the founder of Avoidable Deaths Network. So over to you, Dr. Nibedita. I will be sharing your screen.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience, everybody. I'm so sorry. I've had to attend an interview for a PhD and there were technical challenges as international people. So we just ran a little bit over time. So I'm really sorry for that. But thanks for your patience and waiting. So I'll take only about five minutes or so and then we can move on. And I'm sorry, my dog has just decided to join me. So you can hear him barking. But okay, so let's move on. My name is Nibedita Ray Bennett and Nimra has very kindly introduced me. So I shan't introduce myself anymore. We can move on to the next slide. Thank you. The next slide, please. It's got hung up, I think. Nimra, are you there?
Yeah, can you see it now? Change the slide, no?
Yes, no, I can't see. I can only see the first slide. So we need the second slide now.
I'm so sorry. Let me share again.
Nimra, I think, yeah, it's working now.
Okay, thank you very much. So this is my second slide. So Avoidable Deaths Network, also known as ADN, is often misunderstood as an NGO. So we are not an NGO, not a trust, not a foundation, but a network that is based at the University of Leicester and Kansai University in Japan. And Leicester is based in the UK. We offer MSc in Risk Crisis and Disaster Management. It's a distance learning executive program. We have an opening at the moment for the October intake. If there is any prospective MSc Risk Crisis and Disaster Management student, please feel free to get in touch with me. Otherwise, we have a website. You can look up the course fees. And if you have any other questions, please feel free to get in touch with me. We also offer PhD in management. So, yeah. Kansai University offers BA, BSc in Safety Science and they also offer PhD. So if you are interested in any of these programs, either at Leicester or Kansai, please feel free to get in touch with me or Hidiyuki Shiroshita. So we can move on to the next one. Thank you. So a little bit about Avoidable Deaths Network. So Avoidable Deaths Network is a global, at the same time local, network dedicated to reducing human deaths from natural hazards, natural technological hazards and human-made hazards in low and middle-income countries. Having said that, we also focus in high-income countries. For instance, we have, you know, the ADN Japan chapter in Japan. I'm based in the UK, but otherwise our projects are going on in the global south. Why do we exist? To help policymakers and practitioners make better decisions to save lives and reduce injuries for sustainable development. On the left-hand side, we have, you know, got a few couple of questions. Number one, what are avoidable deaths? I've used, we use Avoidable Deaths Network and Avoidable Deaths time continuously. So otherwise, in general, it means premature deaths. But otherwise, based on what ADN promotes, we understand avoidable deaths are of three types. Amenable deaths, which requires timely interventions to save amenable deaths. Second, preventable deaths, which requires preventable measures to reduce preventable deaths. And thirdly, we also understand avoidable deaths are also governance-related deaths. So for that, we promote risk governance, especially United Nations Disaster Risk Governance Measures to Reduce Governance-Related Deaths. Now, why avoidable deaths? It's partly because we believe that that's the way to promote social justice, inequality and sustainable development. And also, we believe in zero casualties because it is important that zero casualties is advocated and promoted wherever possible because zero damage is not possible. And all these activities of ours, this idea of avoidable deaths and justice directly contributes to Cendi Frameworks Target A and B. So Target A is about reducing disaster deaths substantially by 2030 and Target B is about reduce the number of people affected by disasters by 2030. And these two Cendi Frameworks, Target A and B, work in interface with four sustainable development goals. Now, a couple of years ago, we became, Avoidable Deaths Network became part of the Cendi Frameworks voluntary commitments. So we have a website on the UNDRR page and we provide report every six months. So you can follow up some of our activities that we do through that website as well. Why network? It's important, I think, the challenges such as avoidable deaths are wicked. They crosscut disciplines, actors, sectors at different levels. So it's a wicked problem and we think that networking is a novel way to address those kind of wicked challenges such as reducing avoidable deaths. And this networking brings a new insights to us and to others partly because we understand that networking is basically everyone, whoever is here today is sitting on a pile of knowledge and this knowledge is often untapped. And this knowledge doesn't mean who are writing books, publishing papers, but general public have this knowledge of how to reduce deaths or reduce the number of people affected by disasters or promote resilience, sustainability, so on and so forth. So I think networking is primarily designed to engage with general public and get that knowledge, bring on board and help others. And finally, ADN, we are trying to promote that kind of an arena where people can communicate and interact with others to get new insights to reduce avoidable deaths with the aim of sustainable development. So ADN is a network, it's a global network, but also we set, wherever possible, we are trying to establish networks at local and national level. So we are currently experimenting two types of networks. One is called CAN, Knowledge Exchange Network. And this is partly for those who want to find yet unknown issues related to avoidable deaths. And at a local level, this is partly for high-risk groups. We call it Local Level Action Network. And this is designed for those who want to find solution to known issues related to avoidable deaths. So we have been experimenting CAN in the Caribbean for the indirect disaster deaths and now in India for snakebite deaths. And the Local Level Action Network, Hidiyuki, has been experimenting in Japan, in Izumiyotsu, in the city of Osaka. And we will be experimenting LAN network in the state of Orissa, in our village called Burujari in Orissa. So what do we do? We do quite a few things. So number one, on twelfth of March, we launched a global campaign, which we call it International Awareness Day for Avoidable Deaths, or IAD for AD. And the aim of the IAD for AD is to raise the visibility of indirect deaths and missing persons and also capture the causes and circumstances that lead to avoidable deaths. We have an ongoing project on snakebite deaths. We're trying to experiment and assess the feasibility of knowledge exchange network in the context of snakebite deaths. We have an ongoing project on drowning deaths, which will be starting. This is the second phase of drowning deaths, starting on first of August in three different countries, South Africa, Uganda and Bangladesh. We have a long-lasting project on tsunami deaths. This is led by our junior champions in the city of Izumiyotsu. It's been going on for nearly ten years. Reducing women's and adolescents' girls' deaths during disasters from post-abortion complications is another long-lasting project, been going on for more than eight years. Now the project has moved into prototyping phase. And finally, we also do knowledge exchange webinars and symposia. Now, I have highlighted knowledge exchange webinars because today's special session is part of this. So we try to bring experts, practitioners and researchers to share their knowledge that they hold so that others can benefit. So we can move on to the next one. Okay, so our first knowledge exchange webinar was launched on fourth December, 2020. It's nearly three years. Over these years, we have crossed countries, continents, different locations. So this is probably our twentieth special session that we are launching. So I'm very grateful to all our esteemed speakers for accepting our invitation. And this special session, we are, you know, just facilitating. I think Sari and Ellie has been doing an amazing job. This is led by Bridge Network. So, yeah, we are looking forward to learning and listening from our esteemed speakers. So we can move to the next one. Yes, so if you have not joined ADN, please do. So we have, as I said, a website on UNDRR, Cendi Voluntary Commitments. And you can also follow us on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn. Our ADN team is very proactive in promoting the events and various other things of ADN. And also you can join ADN by just clicking this link. So I think one of my colleagues will drop this link on the chat box. It takes literally a second, maximum three seconds to join ADN. So please feel free to do that. And we can move on to the next one. Yeah, and thank you very much. So over to Sari. Thank you. Thank you for your patience as well.
Thank you, me.
Classic unmuted. Thank you, Nibedita. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so I would like to introduce Dr. Julie Smith. She's an economist and an associate professor at the Australian National University. Her research focuses on the economic valuation of breastfeeding and the regulation of markets for mother's milk. Julie has published more than forty-five peer-reviewed articles, chapters and books on this topic. Julie has provided expert advice to the World Health Organization, the US Department of Health and Human Services and the Australian Department of Health and has actively involved with the international NGOs, including the UNICEF UK. She co-founded the World Breastfeeding Trends Initiative Australia and previously served as board directors for the Australian Breastfeeding Association. Before joining the ANU, Julie had a senior economist position in the Australian and New Zealand territories and the Parliamentary Research Service in Canberra. So it's very honored to have you, Julie, and thank you very much for your time and the space and time is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Sari, and thank you to the organizers for this invitation to speak today. Our global systems for measuring the productive economy reflect misguided and out principles about what is important and what is valuable. It doesn't measure unpaid work, it doesn't measure the environment. So I hope from this webinar talk, you'll come to learn how the economic value of breastfeeding can be measured and calculated and why it isn't and why addressing this gender inequity is important. Also, to understand how measuring unpaid care and breastfeeding in the statistical system for GDP supports key advocacy and action on breastfeeding and to recognize the human and planetary costs of not breastfeeding and the economic opportunity costs of mothers' investments in breastfeeding. So over fifty years ago, Ellen Burke, World Bank nutritionist, remarked on invisible lots of countries of the world, but the crisis in infant feeding is a global one and it is ongoing. It's the norm, but the same was happening around the world. I'll come back to this later. Globally, sales of formula are booming, driven by the collapse of breastfeeding in middle-income countries like China and Brazil and led by nutritionally dubious toddler formula promotion, which exploits parents' anxieties and stresses as well as greenwashing. The decline in breastfeeding is invisible in economic statistics, but it's got large economic implications. The system of national accounting was introduced in the nineteen fifties as a standardized way of measuring gross domestic product, economic growth, as we know. It became how economic performance and progress is measured, but it mainly only counts monetary transactions. Feminist economic research, starting particularly in New Zealand with Dame Professor Marilyn Waring, highlighted that some countries previously counted subsistence production and unpaid household production. But with the advent of counting, this was taken out and also they hide women's productivity. But they have shaped social norms and beliefs about what's important. GDP counts commercial milk formula, but not women's unpaid work. Statistics matter because they are the evidence on which policy is built. At present, measures of national economic output show a decline if more babies are breastfed and a rise if commercial baby foods displace breastfeeding. These are ridiculous results and severely undermine the public credibility of GDP estimates and other data. We don't see the ongoing losses of food production for infants and young children and their displacement by commercial products because mother's milk is not measured in our economic and accounting and performance measurement systems. If the value of breastfeeding and breastmilk were more visible, greater funding priorities for human milk production by increasing breastfeeding. When countries don't include human milk in their economic statistics, breastfeeding mothers' contribution to the economy and society and the importance of breastfeeding for mothers and babies and the food system generally goes unnoticed. The problem of systematically admitting breastfeeding mothers in human milking in national food balance sheets leads to further problems in terms of making a compelling investment case for action. Money is the language of policymakers. Policies and investments in the food system, if you're not measuring mother's milk and breastfeeding, investments will prioritize the protection, promotion and support for other producers, commercial producers, corporate producers and their foods, including milk products from cows and commercial milk formulas for infants and toddlers. And this is likely to have a lower return to society and to the planet's health than breastfeeding. To improve the visibility of breastfeeding in economic statistics, together with Alive and Thrive Southeast Asia-Pacific and other colleagues, including Alex, who's here, we developed the downloadable Mother's Milk Tool. The tool is user-friendly and a downloadable version was launched last year. It's already online and we will have an online version in twenty twenty-two. The tool is useful for many purposes and by a variety of users, as I'll describe in a minute. And it's the logical counterpart to the cost of not breastfeeding tool, which has been developed by Alive and Thrive to calculate the health system cost and the lives lost by not breastfeeding at country level. And it also complements the International Baby Food Actions Costing Tool, the World Breastfeeding Cost Initiative for estimating the financing needs for breastfeeding, including maternity entitlements. Breastfeeding is not solely a woman's responsibility. It depends also on enabling environment being provided by others. So the Mother's Milk Tool can be used by health and food policymakers, food and nutrition security advocates, researchers, national accountants and economists for their decision-making and programming, as well as by mothers, families and their caregivers. The tool helps to quantify the volume and the monetary value of breastfeeding at national, regional and global levels. It can help measure the progress towards national and global breastfeeding targets, inform updating of national policies, programs and investment plans and ensure greater investments and resources are allocated towards the protection, promotion and support of breastfeeding. At the individual level, it can also be used to help mothers' confidence and motivation about the value of what she does for her child. And I'm aware that it's being used for health professional training in some countries as well. More details about the tool are in this recent publication, which is open access, I should add. So here you'll see some snapshots from the tool. Key functions of the Mother's Milk Tool in the offline version are, it's for mothers and for countries. You can do either. It uses preloaded data or you can use your own data on breastfeeding. Where there are gaps in breastfeeding data, we do our best using a prediction model to fill those gaps. And it provides an advocacy kit for people to use for advocacy in their own. We had an online version, which has multiple languages available as well. So for example, you can calculate within the tool these sort of estimates. Thirty-five point six billion liters a year of milk is produced by the world's mothers, packaged sustainably and packaged along with nurturing care. The global monetary value of this breastmilk production for infants and young children aged zero to thirty-six months was around three point six trillion dollars in twenty twenty. So the price we use to measure that is the price of a not-for-profit milk banking network in Norway. But it gives you, and it's a low minimum level price. So it gives you some idea of the value, of this monetary value, which of course is not the only value. Every year, because women are not supported to breastfeed, the world loses around twenty-one point nine billion liters of this perfect baby food because governments fail to invest in the support women need to keep breastfeeding. So production presently is only around thirty-eight percent of potential production levels. Even at a monetary value of around a hundred dollars a liter, which I mentioned before, we're losing over two point two trillion dollars a year of this uniquely valuable food. Ireland, which has one of the lowest breastfeeding rates in the world, competing, I think, with France, loses more than eighty percent of the potential production of milk that mothers could make if they were supported to breastfeed. If all women breastfed in Ireland, instead of producing four point one million liters of milk, they would be producing twenty-four million liters of milk each year for their babies. By contrast, in Nepal, The production of breast milk is around two hundred and twenty one million litres. And only three points, three point nine percent was lost on the most recent. Data that we had available to us. However, I have to add that breastfeeding rates are declining very rapidly. Rapidly in Nepal and from, I'll come back to the figures, but the the situation has become quite dire in a country that was a strong breastfeeding country, bottle feeding has doubled. Since two thousand sixteen with an up to thirty percent since two thousand and sixteen. The tool provides greater policy visibility and awareness of the importance of breastfeeding to a country's food system and economy, and clearly it's very important in Nepal. As I showed above, we found that two hundred and twenty million litres is estimated to be produced each year in Nepal. Around ninety six percent of its biologically feasible levels. The value of this production at current milk bank prices is around twenty two US billion dollars a year. In twenty twenty GDP in Nepal, the whole of GDP was thirty five billion dollars a year. So this milk would be well over the half, over half the value of GDP if Nepal needed to buy it instead of the generosity of mothers providing it. So I'm now going to talk briefly about the green feeding tool. There are three pillars of policy in responding to climate change. These are mitigation, adaptation and resilience. Breastfeeding and policies to support it, address all three of these again. But invisibility. This work on infant and young child feeding in relation to the environment and climate change was initiated and led by global NGOs. Such as the International Baby Food Action. Who produce their green feeding research and resources. And together with ANU, Alive and Thrive have now developed partnerships and collaborations to develop and launch our green feeding tool to complement complement the other tools that I mentioned. You can read more about the the tools and the resources in the references below. In a paper that was published quite recently in twenty twenty two. Scientists from Norway estimated the environmental impacts of infant formula comprehensively. And in particular, they found that estimated emissions over the infant formula product life cycle. Are around two twenty six to two eighty eight kilograms of CO2 equivalent emissions. For that's first six months of exclusive breastfeeding, if they're not breastfed. That emissions is twice as high as from exclusive breastfeeding. And other environmental harms, of course, are significantly higher. As you can see here, this is another example of estimates from the tool. And the tool allows you to put in your own data, like for high income countries like Australia, the data is not available on an internationally consistent basis. And you can put in your own data. And for countries like Indonesia, you can do use the preloaded data and do counterfactual estimations in both cases. So you can say to yourself, what happens if breastfeeding stops? In these countries, what happens if women's work is completely taken for granted and seen as unimportant? What will happen to greenhouse gas emissions and what will happen to water use, which is very important? Increased paid maternity leave from twenty five to fifty weeks, the result was an increase in exclusive breastfeeding of of that eight to nine percentage points. So you can make a simple calculation. For example, that infants that are not exclusively breastfed to six months were fed on exclusively on commercial milk formula. This simple calculation suggests that the paid maternity leave policy reduced Canada's greenhouse gas emissions by over nine million carbon dioxide equivalent kilograms in two thousand and eight, simply by increasing exclusive breastfeeding. So this is an example of how the tool can be used. So I'm just going to talk briefly now about the the opportunity cost, the time cost to women of breastfeeding and how it's important that that societies and governments co-invest with women because women invest enormously in breastfeeding. And this is not counted in current economic and budgeting systems. Lack of societal investment in care work, including breastfeeding, is inequitable and costly to women and children, to health systems and to the environment. Breastfeeding and care work takes time, effort and skill, and it needs investment to be sustainable for women. Not investing costs to women and children, and as we saw the planet. And these investments by by women in care need recognition and invisibility so that the necessary investments are made. Gender budgeting rests on recognising the unpaid economy and following the money from budget from public budgets to see whether it's fairly decided and fairly allocated. Recent research has also shown that investing in breastfeeding is a good investment in planetary health. Investing in renewable energy returns less than investing in the global nutrition targets for breastfeeding. You can see the references here by, the first is by I O F long from Ireland. The biggest investment needed is in maternity protection such as paid maternity leave and workplace breastfeeding support, including breastfeeding breaks. Half a billion women around the world do not have adequate access to maternity protections for very basic women. It's over a hundred per organisation. The very first Congress organised a convention that government signed up to to provide decent leave for women and we still don't have it. Other key investments to support breastfeeding are in baby friendly hospitals and the CUE code implementation of marketing regulation to end exploitative marketing. Emergencies and disasters should be planned for to avoid the industry exploiting the promotion opportunities that occur when government and regulation is disrupted. Alex will be talking about that shortly. This year, the Lancet series on breastfeeding talked about the ecosystem of breastfeeding. Breastfeeding is a biocultural behaviour. It requires an enabling environment for women to maintain it. The recent Lancet series on breastfeeding shows how the ecosystem for breastfeeding has been eroded by commercial formula manufacturers targeting parents' anxieties and marketing to health professionals. The industry also uses its power for advocacy, targeting policymakers to prevent or delay investments in social protections, health system. And other investments in infrastructure that women need to juggle their care work with earning a living. So in conclusion, bold and wide ranging action is needed to galvanise the necessary investments to protect this crucial global food resource. Making mother's milk visible in economic statistics and food balance sheets raises policy priority for protecting breastfeeding. We need to measure what matters and stop counting milk formula production as valuable while not counting breastfeeding at all. It thereby could progress economic wellbeing as well as greater equity in child health, gender and society and sustainability. So I'd like to acknowledge here the team that helped develop the mother's milk tool. With funding from FHI Solutions and the Australian Research Council. And also the team that developed the Green Feeding Action Tool. So thank you very much for your attention and thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you. So we will, lots of thought provoking. It's very thought provoking, so if people want to also to to drop questions in in the chat box, but we will Q and A will be at the end of the presenter, yeah, or the presentation. So, okay, so I would like to introduce Alex Lamo. He is a Senior Emergency Nutrition Advisor at the Family Health International three sixty. Welcome, Alex. Thank you so much for joining us. And Alex has an extensive expertise in nutrition and infant and young child feeding. Policies and practice, particularly in emergencies. And the WHO International Code Baby Friendly Hospital and the Operational Guidance for Infant and Young Child Feeding. Again, it's an emergency and Alex has worked with the WHO Scientific and Technical Advisory Group. On the international court. And assisted the International Baby Food Action Network with the development of World Breastfeeding Trend Initiative. We welcome you, Alex, and the time and space is yours. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just a second. Thank you, Sari and team for the invitation. And yeah, and thanks again, Julie, always very inspiring. It's never, it's never something, it's never some old views from Julie, there is always something to think and to keep reflecting on. So, yeah, the topic is infant and young child feeding in emergencies and some linkage with gender responsive budgets, a budget. The first few slides are just to frame a bit what we are trying to discuss here, what we are trying to to reflect on all together. So I'm sharing some images of emergencies around the world and I hope they are not too strong. Or they don't create any issue among the people around the call. But the main message around these images are, the messages around these images are few. And I will share with them my thoughts. In a second. So in general, and this is based on my experience, but I'm sure there are colleagues around this table, around this call that have similar experiences. What we know, what we've seen, what we are documenting every time we engage, you know, in an emergency is women and children are generally the most affected in the emergencies. And two, that emergency strikes everywhere, no, low income, middle income, high income countries, we have more and more experiences and of course, for example, Julie comes from a country like Australia that unfortunately the currently experienced emergencies. I heard colleagues from Japan, we have colleagues from the US, Canada, Italy, this is a picture from Italy, earthquake. So again, so women and children are among the most affected populations and emergency strikes everywhere. So it's not an issue, it's not a problem of low income countries, but it's a problem on every woman and every child that is affected by an emergency. That came out from, it showed in two thousand and two, and these were endorsed by all member states of the United Nations, so the the desire, you know, the global, the collective desire is for women around the world. Again, any context and at all times, so all women around the world in any context at all time. To be able to initiate breastfeeding, to be able to exclusively breastfeed their infants and hopefully to continue breastfeeding up to two years or beyond. And again, we have volumes and volumes of evidence that have supported those recommendations. From a mortality point of view, we have seen the Lancet twenty sixteen. That even more than eight hundred thousand under five deaths could be prevented by breastfeeding and by breastfeeding alone, by increasing, by improving the breastfeeding rates. At the same time, we have seen, you know, and again, there are volume of evidence. How breastfeeding is really important as well as to prevent deaths caused by breast cancer. And improving breastfeeding, improving the current breastfeeding rates can help prevent additional twenty thousand deaths from the from the one that are already being prevented using the current, you know, the current baseline. So again, very important, very important contribution of breastfeeding if we are able to improve and increase breastfeeding practices. Both in relation to child mortality and to women's, to maternal deaths due to breast cancer in particular. And we have seen a growing body of evidence around the economic impact of improving breastfeeding across context. And we have seen how this economic impact is very very relevant, as I was mentioning, in high income countries, so countries maybe where we are, you know, we are coming from or other countries in the middle or low income. So we have seen, we know all of this evidence and again, Julie earlier on presented additional evidence of the importance of breastfeeding. And the importance of supporting breastfeeding across context. But what about infant, what about emergency, what about the situation in our emergency context? What is happening and what has happened so far? Let's start from some of the challenges and this is a slide I borrowed from Julie. For for another presentation, but I felt it was very relevant for this conversation as well. When a consistent challenge that we experience in our emergency responses in relation to breastfeeding is the the marketing of breast milk substitutes. And how the marketing during emergencies does affect, you know, our ability to protect and promote and support infant feeding also during an emergency context. And we are seeing it with the enormous amounts of infant formula being donated, for example, during emergencies and the attempts of the industry to promote products even during an emergency response. Based on our experience, we have been documenting other type of challenges, you know, and I'm just trying to summarise what we have seen in across context, you know. So in general, unfortunately, we experience lack of support, no lack of resources, lack of attention within our emergency response activities. To support breastfeeding or to support other infant feeding interventions like complementary feeding. And this is very evident when wasting or acute malnutrition is not is not seen as a problem. So in contexts where we don't experience high levels of acute malnutrition. Then the donor community, the governments do not consider those contexts having any nutrition issues. So they they ignore and neglect the importance of breastfeeding support and the importance of other of maternal nutrition support for that case. The second, as I was mentioning earlier, lead to the breast milk substitutes marketing is really the widespread donation of product. Donations that are not controlled, are not done according to standards. And we will see, we will hear, we will not hear, but we will be able to see what mothers have to say about those donations. But we regularly systematically see a huge enormous amount of products being donated and donated also to women that don't want it or don't need it. And donated without any form of, you know, any any access to clean water or donated with any utensils or any other preparatory tools or, you know, or utensil that may be needed. To ensure the safe preparation of those products in environments that are very challenged from a sanitation point of view, from a from a from an hygienic point of view. Another major challenge, keep documenting, but doesn't take, doesn't get much attention or the resources needed to to be able to address it. Is that displacement caused by an emergency. The insecurity caused by an emergency do express fear. And this is being, and this is, and these are, these are situations, these are feelings, these are perceptions. That unfortunately impact the ability of women to to care and to nurture their own children in a situation of an emergency. And I literally, our companies unfortunately exploit those emergency conditions to market their products. during emergencies. And we have been seeing how they did it during the COVID-19 pandemic. One of the biggest, you know, it's not the biggest emergency we have ever seen and dealt with. On the donation side, we don't have really a large amount of peer reviewed evidence, but we see, we have substantial evidence to show why we are very concerned on the, on donating products without a control mechanism, without, without trained professionals, without the support that women and children may need if ever the product is really necessary. And just a disclaimer, we are not, we are not denying that in certain costs, contexts, in certain situations, infant formula is necessary. But we are vetting the importance of providing this product under a very controlled environment and providing all the needed support so that the product is not going to, you know, affect the family. Like in the case of Indonesia where families that receive infant formula eventually experience a large number of diarrhea cases because of the inappropriate type of donations and the lack of access to safe water and so on and so forth. I wanted to share with you some real experiences from a recent, from a current, not one of the current emergencies where we are working. And this is the Ukraine conflict where we did engage, we did really ask women to tell us what type of support were they receiving, are they receiving in relation to infant feeding? And look at some of the calls and a full article is being, is coming out, is being published. And Julie as well is one of the co-authors of this article. See these codes really that tells us or confirms what we've been unfortunately documenting, emergency after emergency. Some mothers said at the onset of the conflict in March, April, all pharmacies were closed and there was no humanitarian aid. I had to find an old woman with a cow and gave cow's milk to my baby. She had a newborn, a child that was very young in his age, below, in one year of age. Another mother said humanitarian aid provided in some formula, I refused. The mother wasn't refusing it, but they said that she had taken. So again, the type of support provided, it's mainly reflected in widespread donation of formula without any form of support. Another mother was saying, and then the activities became more active, more active and they were closer to our place. Shelling and explosions came every five or 10 minutes. My mental health got worse. I was constantly nervous. And that's why my meal supply dropped. And that's what she was feeling, that she was not able to breastfeed or she was not able to breastfeed properly because of that stressful situation. Certainly, the war did affect the situation. My breast milk production was not sufficient to feed the child. And let's also listen, oh, sorry, again, we are not listening, but let's also see how practitioners on the ground, Steve from the Ukraine conflict. And again, we could bring many more experiences. I know there are documented experiences from Australia and we are now publishing another experience from the Turkey, Syria earthquake. But look at what these lactation consultants, these lactation counselors from Ukraine saw, the level of support that women affected by the conflict are received, are receiving during, unfortunately, the ongoing conflict. UNICEF spaces do not provide any infant feeding support. Women are not getting any infant feeding support beside what they were doing as lactation counselors. Most women now don't breastfeed because there is no support, nobody supports breastfeeding. So it's a reiteration of this lack of support to women with young children in a conflict situation. Today, more than before, women lack support and the biggest challenges are infant formula donations and that nobody is supporting breastfeeding women. A lot of formula drive in Ukraine is available and continues to be available everywhere. But what can we do? And again, that's just a snapshot of something. And I want to repeat something that we, and I am sad to acknowledge, keep seeing and we keep documenting, but we are not able to change. What can we do? Well, we certainly don't lack guidance, we certainly don't lack standards. And these are some of, of the standards, of the guidance, of the protocol that are globally available and globally endorsed, meaning by the UN member states. So countries like my country, Italy, like countries like Australia endorsed, or New Zealand for that, or Pakistan endorsed this guidance, endorsed those commitments. But if we look at where we are, again, from a recent Global Nutrition Policy Review conducted by WHO, out of 162 countries that responded to that exercise, that participated in that exercise, only 26%, no, one fourth of those countries said that they have something, there's some form of policy that relates to infant feeding in emergencies. So we are really lagging behind on national guidance, national protocols, national guidelines on what to do, how to support infant feeding in an emergency, domestic emergency or with an international dimension. And so again, only 38 countries out of those 162 mention some form of protocols. In general, these are, in general, these are protocols related to counseling. But very few have protocols about establishing state spaces for breastfeeding. And a bit more, no, have some protocols in relation to conducting these assessments for infant feeding or controlling breast milk substitutes. So we are really lagging behind on how to respond to, how to support women in emergencies in relation to their infant feeding needs. So in conclusion, I think I'm very confident, I think we can all say that there is no question that promoting or protecting and supporting infant feeding, breastfeeding in particular, is a life-saving intervention. But despite all the evidence, infant feeding is rarely systematically supported and resourced. And again, in one of the largest humanitarian response, the current Ukraine conflict, one of the largest and the most funded humanitarian response, donors said, no, we don't, we don't see this as a problem. This is not a problem according to them, no. We can also say that there is still very limited or not capacity in many countries to, to support infant feeding. And this is why we are not able to, to respond to the needs of these women. The women I, I, we gave some, we are able to, we documented their experience in Ukraine. Or the women we are documenting their experience in Australia, the women we are documenting their experience in after the Turkey, Syria conflict, sorry, earthquake, or the Syria conflict. As we have seen, we are really lagging behind. We don't have plans, we don't have policies. We are very limited plans or policies and certainly budgets that recognize the needs of women and their infants as part of the emergency response. And once again, infant formula donations are widespread, are across every emergency. And we face serious challenges in preventing them and or controlling the thing. So thank you so much for the time and the opportunity to be here and very happy to answer any question as it may be come from the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. It's very insightful presentation. Thank you for your time and sharing with us this eye-opening, very new topic for many of us on infant and child feeding practices and emergencies and policy. And it's a wicked problem, isn't it? So the question and the Q and A will be at the end of the presentation. But if people would like to, to start writing their questions, you're welcome to do it in the chat. Okay, for the next one, the next presentation, we have Andini Pramono. Welcome, Andini. Salamat sore. So Andini Pramono is an international board certified lactation consultant. And you will graduate with your doctoral degree from the Australian National University next week. So our congratulation to you, Andini. So your PhD, Andini PhD research centers around the facilitators and barriers to implementing the baby-friendly hospital initiative in Indonesia and Australia. So in the past 10 years or more than 10 years, Andini actively contributes to the Indonesian Breastfeeding Mothers Association, Australian Breastfeeding Association and the World Breastfeeding Trend Initiative Australia. So your presentation will be looking into baby-friendly hospital comparing Indonesia and Australia. Welcome, Andini. The time and place is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Sari. I will share my screen now. Can you hear my voice? Okay?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, perfect. I will share my screen now. Can you see my screen now? I think, yeah, okay, perfect.
Thank you.
I will start my timer as well. So, okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak in this webinar. I'm going to share one part of my PhD research, social value of baby-friendly hospital initiative in Australia and Indonesia. Before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge the traditional owner of the land on which I present today, Manawa and Ngambri people and pay my respect to their elders, past and present. I have no conflict of interest to declare. Picture and photos that I use in this presentation are for educational purpose only. As we all know, the first few hours and days of a newborn's life is critical period to establish lactation and provide mothers with the support they need to breastfeed successfully. Data from UNICEF showed that 78% of deliveries were attended by a skilled health provider, but only 45% of newborns were breastfed within the first hour after birth. Health professionals may perform inappropriate procedures that interfere with initiation of breastfeeding such as separation of the mother and infant, delayed initiation of breastfeeding, provision of pre-lectile feeds and unnecessary supplementation. These procedures increase the risk of breastfeeding challenges that lead to early cessation. Now I want to go backward a bit. Why the first few days after birth is critical? Breast milk that comes out on day one until day three, which is called colostrum, only comes out in small amount and it will gradually increase.
Andini?
It is, yeah, sorry.
Andini, I'm so sorry. Can we expand your slide, please? Because it's, it's not legible, is it possible? So maybe put this show view, maybe?
Oh.
Yes, please, because it's, it's not legible, the letters and things. So just try, don't worry about the time, take a few seconds. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, yeah. Otherwise, you can ask Nimra to share.
I'm not sure why it's not.
Or could we have Nimra to share?
No, 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 probably I'll try this one.
Yes, that's better. Thank you.
Is it okay now?
Good, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, because, yeah, sorry?
It's all right. I think, Julie, are you okay with this?
Yes, it's good.
Okay, okay. Because I'm using two screens here, so I'm sometimes a bit confused. Okay, okay, I'll continue with this one. Yeah, so it is, the amount of the colostrum is adjusting to the newborn's stomach as you can see in the right picture. And these sometimes are being misunderstood as lack of breast milk. And at this situation, then mothers might be suggested to supplement with formula during the hospital stay. Brief explanation on how breast milk is produced. Every time a baby suckle to their mother, it triggers a nerve in the nipple and areola which sends an impulse to the brain and then the brain releases the hormones into the bloodstream. So the more, the more baby suckle, the more a mother produces breast milk. Therefore, breastfeeding support during hospital stay, usually two or three days, is really important and critical to establish breastfeeding journey. So the WHO launched the 10 steps to successful breastfeeding in 1989 to ensure every mother and baby receive adequate breastfeeding support and education regardless their background. And then the 10 steps embedded to the PFHI program in 1991. And also in 2018, the 10 steps was revised. But I would like to emphasize the difference between the two that I would use in, during this presentation. So the 10 steps is the policy framework, while the PFHI is the name of the program in which hospitals implement the 10 steps and then undergo an external assessment. And then this hospital will be awarded baby-friendly status. So I would like to refresh you with the 1989 10 steps. So it's here to, for you to read it in your time. And then this one is the 2018 10 steps. So we can see there, a major change made by WHO is subdividing the 10 steps into two subgroups. The first one is critical management procedures and the second one is key clinical practices. The changes is actually subtle, but it is important for implementation. The focus moves from providing information to mothers only to educating and enabling mothers and their families. The focus for healthcare staff shifts from providing education to ensuring knowledge, competence, skills and monitoring implementation into practice. And the focus also shifted the responsibility for some elements of care from hospitals to the community. Why are PFHI and 10 steps important? So there are lots of studies that show the positive association between PFHI and breastfeeding prevalence. But I just show you here the large studies. The one large cluster randomized trial in Republic of Belarus found that infants from sites receiving an experimental intervention of the PFHI model were seven times more likely to be exclusively breastfed at four months. Another study in Scotland found that babies born in PFHI hospital were 28% more likely to be exclusively breastfed at seven days postnatal. And one study in Hong Kong found that after implementing a policy of paying market price for infant formula in public hospitals, there was a significant decrease of in-hospital supplementation of breastfeeding babies, a decrease in the overall rate of premature breastfeeding cessation and an increase in the median duration of breastfeeding. But the data in 2017 of unfortunately, only 10% of babies were born in PFHI hospital globally. Now we're going to look into the implementation in Australia and Indonesia. The first one is, I'm going to talk about PFHI in Australia. So UNICEF passed governance of PFHI within Australia to the Australian College of Midwives in 1995, where it remains today. And in 20, sorry, 2006, in Australia, the Baby Friendly Hospital Initiative became the Baby Friendly Health Initiative in order to more accurately reflect the expansion of the initiative into community health facilities. But the latest data show that only 26% of all Australian hospital designated as baby-friendly. Now 10 steps Indonesia. In Indonesia, the Ministry of Health implemented a program called Mother and Baby Friendly Hospital Initiative in 2009, which despite its name was quite different from PFHI. This initiative aimed to reduce maternal postpartum mortality rather than to improve breastfeeding success. And there is no specific program currently to promote the PFHI in Indonesia. Despite some research referring to the PFHI in Indonesian setting, what they actually meant was the implementation of the 10 steps. what they actually meant was the implementation of the Ten Steps. So I'm just going to show you the, this figure to describe how the PFHI and Ten Steps connect to Indonesian regulation. So in the left box, PFHI refers to the implementation of the Ten Steps and external assessment that is conducted regularly every three and fo, three until five years. Um the nineteen eighty-nine Ten Steps was adopted perpatim to the Indonesian government regulation. Uh and then step four and six were included in the national hospital accreditation standard. Step one and ten were included in the Indonesian Mother and Baby Friendly Hospital Initiative, which I mentioned in the previous slides. However, the Ten Steps, sorry, the twenty eighteen Ten Steps hasn't been adopted yet. And we don't have the uh PFHI accreditation program at the moment. Now we're looking at the studies of PFHI and Ten Steps implementation in Australia and Indonesia. There are several Australian studies describing barriers to PFHI and Ten Steps implementation and/or accreditation which are similar to those reported in the international literature. Most studies examine midwives' perspective and agree that the PFHI and Ten Steps have a positive impact on breastfeeding duration. While for Indonesia, unfortunately, only few studies examining Ten Steps implementation. But in those a few studies, they mention about barriers that includes a lack of breastfeeding education and knowledge of hospital staff, influence of infant formula manufacturers and hospital infrastructure and regulation. Uh many benefits of breastfeeding are intangible and long-term and understanding short-term economic benefits provides tangible evidence and potential incentives for health services and policymakers. There is an increasing interest of research studying the benefit of breastfeeding and cost of not breastfeeding in economic terms. Some of these have been explained by Alex, so I won't repeat this and again. And this also studies from Australia, Southeast Asian countries and also Indonesia. Some studies also have calculated the social value of breastfeeding for, program with the aim of ins- incentivizing governments and other gov, other stakeholders to invest more in breastfeeding. For example, uh this study from Nairobi and also in Ireland. Uh now, just brief a description about the framework that I used to calculate the so, social value. So I use the social return on investment or SRI. It is a framework that measures and accounts for the broader value of breastfeeding. Uh because the benefits of breastfeeding are associated with a wide range of outcomes, including health and social benefits. Therefore, this methodology was relevant to help understand the value created by these programs to inform policymaking. This is a structured questionnaire that we developed uh to use for our interview in my case studies. This is based on the twenty eighteen Ten Steps. So now into the Australian case study. So for this one, uh the study was conducted in Calvary Public Hospital Canberra in August twenty nineteen. We selected this hospital because this hospital has been baby-friendly accredited for fifteen years. And the data that we collected was analyzed in Excel using SRA framework which uses man, money, monetary values to measure social, environmental and economic outcomes of change. The inter, the information obtained in the interviews was supplemented with evident-based estimation for, from recent high-quality studies that measured the health and cost-saving benefits of breastfeeding. This is uh the, the hospital, Calvary Public Hospital, so it was established in nineteen seventy-nine. It also has rooming-in facility, so for babies that needs uh, uh medical treatment after birth, so the mother or the parents can stay uh in the hospital to continue breastfeed or maintaining their uh breast milk production. The average number of births in this hospital was one thousand annually with exclusive breastfeeding rate on discharge of ninety-seven percent in twenty nineteen. So after the uh calculation, uh our study found that the every one Australian dollar invested in maintaining PFHI accreditation by this hospital generated approximately fi, fifty-five Australian dollar of benefit or um around thirty-seven US dollar. Now for the Indonesian case study, so for this case study, it was conducted in Erlanga University Hospital, Surabaya. It is a government hospital that has been implementing this step, the Ten Steps since two thousand and twelve. We followed the same methods as the Australian case study and the data was collected in January twenty twenty. Briefly description about this hospital. It was established in twenty twelve by the Erlanga University and local government as a teaching hospital. Erlanga is a referral hospital under the Indonesian National Health Insurance System, which means that mothers usually do antenatal checkup at their local maternity services and then refer to Erlanga Hospital to give birth. Uh yeah, this hospital has been implementing the Ten Steps since its establishment. And the average number of births in this hospital was three thousand and six hundred annually with exclusive breastfeeding rate on discharge of eighty percent in twenty nineteen. After the calculation, we found that every one US dollar invested in this hospital could be expected to generate approximately forty-nine US dollar of benefit. However, there are limitations for these case studies. Both case studies measured the benefits compared to the costs invested by the hospital. Nevertheless, our study did not include cost saving for healthcare providers which were not taken into account due to large gaps in the literature relevant to the Australian and Indonesian health system. There is no uh literature on the benefits to healthcare professionals in implementing the Ten Steps and/or achieving the PFHI accreditation. Moreover, mothers' time and effort to breastfeed were not included in the calculation with only limited data on this important investment available in the current literature. So in summary, social value of PFHI and Ten Steps are greater than the investment. And this um uh case study provides novel evidence of breastfeeding as a public health tool demonstrating the value of the investment in terms of social impact for mothers, babies, families, communities and countries. Breastfeeding has the potential to help address inequity throughout the lifetime by providing the equal best start to all infants regardless of their background. And also I would like to um reemphasize the way uh WHO recommendation on the integration of breastfeeding knowledge into the national curriculum standard for health students. And this program also will need government commitment and prioritization as well as multi-sectoral collaboration. Both case studies have been published in twenty twenty-one and you can scan the QR code to download and read the full paper. Thank you for your time and your attention. Thank you.